Good afternoon. I now call the Rockland Unified School District Board of Education Special Meeting, Board Study Session for Wednesday, August 4th, 2021 to order. Brenda, will you please call the roll?
Julie Hub.
Here.
Rick Miller.
Here.
Rochelle Price.
Here.
Tiffany Sadhoff.
Here.
Derek Counter.
Here. As a reminder, this is a board study session. The board will only be discussing items on the agenda. No action will be taken. If you would like to provide public comment on items on the board's study session agenda, the board will take those comments later on in the meeting. We will not be accepting public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We will also want to remind the public that the board meeting will having their regular board meeting this evening at 6:30 PM. As always, that meeting is open to the public to attend and will also be available via online live streaming for viewing. All public comment must be done in person. You can visit the front page of the district website, rocklandusd.org, to view the agenda for this evening. The board will now move to the study session. Following board discussion for each item, the board will open the meeting up for any public comment on any specific agenda item. All right. Superintendent Stock will start us off with Agenda Item 4.1, our USD Board Meeting Major Agenda Items Calendar for 2021-2022 here.
President Counter, trustees want to again thank the board for taking additional time from your busy schedules and day jobs to provide us a couple hours to update the board on important areas the board has identified as multi-years of focus for the district to improve outcomes for students. Since the board has chosen these areas for the district to focus on over the next several years, I've worked with board approval to reorient the district in terms of focus coherence and putting resources into place to address these areas. The timing could not have been better for that guidance from the board. As you will see, we've been able to leverage the infusion of one-time funds and even our COVID learning recovery work in academic, social, emotional, to begin addressing these district priorities. So we're going to start tonight with the first of these four items is just a board calendar for the, a proposed board calendar for the coming year that looks at when will these major initiatives be brought to the board to make sure that the board feels they're getting the information they need to conduct its governance and oversight activities. So there is a link that Ms. Meadow sent to you with this and also there's a hard copy of this proposed calendar in front of you. And I'd just like to quickly walk through what's in it and then if there's any questions or revision from the board, make note. One of the areas that was discussed is there's an interest to update our community more frequently on facilities and maintenance projects and not just the projects but the expenditures related to them. So you'll see in here, beginning in September 1st, first of three of these facilities maintenance project updates that'll be occurring in here and in January and then in the spring again. So that's an item. And again, this item is not intended to list every single item on a board agenda, but just major areas of focus of the board or maybe something significantly like the facilities. Quarry Trail, we're excited to open our 12th elementary school. This has been much anticipated, especially in the Whitney Ranch area. You'll be hearing more about that later, but we're working to be on tonight to provide, this afternoon, to provide the board with updates in September, November, February, and May. So we'll be updating you along the way as we progress. Different of those months, we'll have different focuses. For example, we'll be updating in September on much more of the dual immersion actual academic program. November, we'll be hopefully bringing you a recommendation for principals. So we'll be keeping you updated there. We included our LCAP and budget work because those are major pieces of work that the board engages in annually. And so we wanted you just to see when we anticipate bringing those to the board as well. The only statutory requirements related to that, of course, are the adoption prior to July 1st. Then I think, then a major area of focus the board has set is in math and learning loss, learning recovery. And so what we have here following feedback from the board is the idea of having a study session around the baseline pieces of data metrics, a couple updates throughout the year, and then a summative report. So what we have here on this is on October 6th, which was our first study session, bringing baseline data to the board. We're going to talk about the metrics and a couple specific items today. So hopefully we'll leave with agreement on the metrics that'll be used. But we'll do that first baseline piece on October 6th in a study session.
What is leaning loss? I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
Thank you. That's why, and I draw trustee, I draw trustees Miller's notice of the word in the top right-hand corner in bold that says draft. And we appreciate that, feedback on this draft.
You can spell Miller M.I.L.E.R.
And so, and so we as a, we are a learning organization. And so then to follow that, we have planned in January 26th in our study session to bring a progress update. This aligns with our map testing windows. So the idea was to align this with our windows when we'd have data available. And so we'll be doing math, learning loss, and of course, that's when the governor's proposed budget comes out, which is kind of an annual kickoff of information there. In April, you'll notice, we normally, we had our study schedule, a study session scheduled for April 6th. We are wanting to move that to April 27th for the next progress update. And the reason being is we need the time to have our next testing cycle complete and get the data for the board. If we kept it to April, we would be, because we have elementaries and trimesters, of course, secondary schools and quarter semesters. So this movement allows us to have it with the data. So this would, we would cancel the April 6th study session and replace it with the April 27th study session would be the recommendation.
So by the 27th, we'll have fall and winter information in the, I mean.
Yeah.
You have baseline, you'll have a winter, and then you'll have a spring.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So that'll allow for that. And then, and then, of course, June 8th, we would do a summative year report. We'll provide you with the data we have. And so that would be the cycle of baseline to progress reports and a summative piece. And so, you know, and then, and so if that is, so the idea was to bring this to the board, make sure the board felt comfortable with when they were seeing major items of focus. And then we can kind of begin to work through the schedule. So happy, any questions or requested revisions? President Counter.
Just looking at, and then by June 8th, when we have summative year one report, that'll give, at that point, we'll have enough data in-house to say, how did the 2021, 2021 or 21, 22 school year, how did it all work? Are we good, like, we'll have data present?
We'll have map data and IXL data. We won't have CASP data. We may. They always say we may, but Julie's laughing. But we'll definitely have map and IXL data at that point, summative.
Okay.
So, so board, I'm not hearing any requests for changes or revisions.
No, just the opposite. I just, this is great. I appreciate weighing out. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the cadence of it. I appreciate actually waiting for the data to come in before we meet. It makes perfect sense. And so, thank you. This is great.
So then, based on that, we will bring a revised board calendar to you as a consent item to move the April study session from the 6th to the 27th. And with that, President Counter, I have nothing further on this item. We can move to the second item. So, second item.
Double check, no public comment? All right. Superintendent Stock, Agenda Item 4.2, Math Improvement Update.
Much anticipated by our board. This, this item, and we're going to turn it over to Beth Davidson, your newly appointed Director of Academic Improvement and Multi-Systems Systems of Support, to walk the board through metrics. The goal of this item is to respond to the, when the board shared their feedback with me in June related to the types of metrics it was looking to see. And I appreciate the board saying to me, we want ambitious but achievable metrics. This is some thinking we have, but, you know, go to work on it and come, report back to us where you're at. So Beth's going to lead this, this portion of the study session.
All right. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, President Counter, Superintendent Stock. I'm excited to be here with you today. Our goal for the presentation is to share some context behind how we came up with our long and short-term goals in terms of improving student performance in the area of mathematics. So I have a short number of slides because we want to make sure that you have time to dialogue, ask any questions you may have, and incorporate any feedback you have into our current planning and thinking. And we know that this is kind of a living and breathing document and goal in terms of our long-term work. So previously, Dr. McDonald had shared at the last workshop, the areas of focus in math improvement include some structured interventions we'll be creating, our systems investigation, and the PDSAs that will follow development of common assessments either by grade level or course, and a data system that we can use to monitor progress over time. So the focus for today will really be in that last question there. How will we know that a change is actually an improvement? So we want to create some goals that are, as Superintendent Stock said, ambitious but achievable. So we'll give you a little bit of context on how we landed on our five-year goal and an annual goal and how we'll update quarterly, and would welcome any dialogue, questions, or feedback about that. We know that the board provided some initial thinking to Superintendent Stock about some of the goals for long and short term. So we took that information in terms of your initial thinking and developed it based on the context and other data we're able to analyze in order to create those goals. So here's some information from core in terms of math improvement. So this shows districts who have similar demographics to ours in terms of their enrollment, the percentage of English learners, and then the percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students. And there are two columns here. The first one represents the percentage of students meeting or exceeding standard on the CASP. And this data is from the 2018-19 school year, which is the most recent CASP data we have, unfortunately. And then the second column there shows the math growth percentile using the core growth metric. So you can see that Rockland Unified currently ranks very high in both columns there in terms of the percentage overall of students meeting and exceeding standard and in terms of our growth relative to other districts. But we do have room for improvement. You can see a couple districts have scores on either column that may be a little bit higher than ours. So we use that to frame our context in terms of creating goals that will be achievable, but aspirational.
Can I just, so I really appreciate this. Obviously, I love this. I mean, I do think in any data conversation, as you know, variation is an important part. We recognize variation. So while this is great, and it actually is important to see this, there also is variation within our schools that I hope we're also paying attention to as well. We don't get, we don't get, walk from the average.
Absolutely. And we'll talk about that a little bit later in terms of some site-specific goals we're listening at.
From a math standpoint, which is percentage of students exceeding standard, is that the state standard?
Yes. Okay. So in 2019, again, just to provide a little bit of context here before we get into the goals themselves, Rockland Unified ranked in the top 12% in the state of California on the CASP assessment in the area of mathematics for students meeting or exceeding the standard. If we meet our five-year aim, which we'll share in a few moments here, that would move us for our overall performance as a district into the top 5% in the state. So our long-term goal, we're looking at, and a little bit more context I'd like to share here, if you look at district performance across the state of California and even the nation, you see very little fluctuation between the overall scores. The percentage of students meeting or exceeding standard tends to change by 1% to 2% a year. And it may go up a percent and then down half a percent, and then up two, and then down three. So we see that we've stagnated as a state overall, and you can see that in our district data as well. We tend to fluctuate between 1% or half a percent from year to year. So we are looking at, for a five-year aim, and again, our baseline data would be the 2019 CASP data. That's the most recent state data that we have. By 2026, our USD will increase the number of students meeting or exceeding standard by 5%. So the district as a whole. And then going a little bit beyond that, we want to target some of our student groups. We want to increase their performance by 10% overall in that same period of time. And then we made a note down below that those targeted student groups will include targeted areas in our LCAP as well. So you'll see some alignment there. So socio-economically disadvantaged English learners. We are looking to include students who are redesignated as English proficient because we tend to, once students are making adequate progress, exit them. And then they wouldn't be included in terms of looking at their long-term growth. So we will be including those students in that metric. Students with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness, and foster you. Trustee Miller.
Yeah. So this is a real question. Would you rather me hold the questions till the end and ask you, or do you want me to jump in as we?
Fire away.
Okay. So a couple things. One is, we probably don't have the data chops to be able to do this. But do we know how ambitious that is? Like, in other words, if you look over the last 10 years, if we didn't, if we kept exactly the same, this says we're going to exceed by 5%. Where would we be on the natural? Do we have any, the answer we know, but I do want to, do we know that by any chance? Are we able to look at that?
Where would we be?
Like, in other words, back when I was at CD, there's a guy named Bill Patey, he would, he would use data to predict. He would say, based on our last 10 years, you're, with nothing else, you're going to get here on the natural. And now here is, are we able to do something like that, predict where? And so how disruptive is 5%? Because 5%, maybe we do that on the own, maybe this is incredibly ambitious. And I'm wondering how you made that determination that this was doable but ambitious.
So we looked at our own, we started with our own data from 2014. And in that initial first year, we saw a 4% gain in our overall score. And then we stagnated. And that's very similar to what we see in districts across the state of California. So the next year, we increased by 1%, and then 1% again. And then we decreased by almost 1% for the 18-19 school year. And you see very similar trends for other districts. So they may have made growth initially, and then they plateaued. Sometimes they decrease a little bit. So a 5% gain is, we haven't seen that in any of the districts we've looked at. So our, our goal was to be ambitious, to say, we may increase by 1%, but then we'll probably decrease again. So we really have plateaued over the last five years. So a 5% gain means we are adding additional resources and attention to this goal area. So we expect to see more growth than we would if everything remained the same.
And more than we've ever seen. So that's great.
And sustained, not the pendulum up, down, up, down. So.
And that's the beauty, of course, of a five-year goal. It's like, we have five years to figure out how we get there and sustain. That's great.
So what is the baseline that we're using?
2019 CASP data.
What is our score? Like, just, is it 12, 15?
It's 62.
62.
62.9.
So then on the, second thing, so I want to start by saying thank you, and I deeply appreciate having a goal of overall proficiency and then looking at gaps. I think it's critically important, and I'm very happy you included that. And I love the ambitiousness of the gap. The only thing I just ask is that theoretically, it's possible within this to make both those goals and not close the gaps. Not very likely, but possible, which save everyone grows 10%. And so I'm wondering if there's a willingness for us to actually talk about closing gaps as a goal as opposed to just a percentage, and actually say, we will halve the gap, we'll quarter the gap, or whatever it is. And that is, and again, and I would actually put in that caveat with the understanding that this is both gaining. Like, you cannot close the gap by someone coming down. Both must gain, but those the farthest behind have to gain more. And that is our goal. So I'd love to think about that as a possible amendment. And I do understand how unlikely it is that we'd all grow 10%. But nevertheless, I think, I think stating that we're recognizing that is what I'm getting.
Sorry, just to help. So if we were 62.9, we'll round 63 in 2019, do we have our 20, I guess, we won't have our 2021 number, we do have that?
No.
Till June. What was our, we don't have a 2020 number at all?
No.
Just because we didn't do it?
And frankly, I'm pretty dubious of our 2021 number, given when they took it, how kids took it, the circumstances of COVID. It's a pretty questionable.
We had a large number locked out this year, so it's going to be, like Rick's saying, kind of challenging.
And then we didn't give it in the CASP except in 11th grade. So, because we did our own assessment, we took that option because it was more valuable to teachers. So we really won't have a measure.
Done in a different environment that they've ever done it before, lots of reasons to question this.
And just, I guess, just walking through the metrics and tracking, and if we were 63, we want to get to 66 by 2026, do we have a 2024 goal of 64? Is there, I know, is there interim goals?
Right.
So we did not, yes. That's certainly something we can consider. We didn't put that in our five-year aim because we know that a five-year goal means, and we'll get to our annual goal in a minute, which is targeted towards learning recovery. So we're trying to pair those goals together as an initiative. Because we know when we're flooding the system with all kinds of initiatives and resources, we want to be mindful of our staff in terms of implementation. So our annual goal for this year will be focused on learning recovery. And next year, it may target a different group. Maybe we're looking at first instruction. And so we didn't want to put necessarily trackers on that overall five-year goal for how much percentage gain we'll make each of the years because it may fluctuate depending on which group we're targeting.
Fair. And so I guess, just looking at that, so 2020, so that's every student, all 100%. And then the, the second bullet is a 10% for just those in the targeted group.
That's correct.
Got you. So I guess what I'm saying is there's not a third bullet of the, the group minus the target group. There's not a subset. It's either all or a subset, but there's not the other subset.
Correct.
Okay.
And we, I mean, the math is 1% a year, which sounds very unimpressive. But what's different is the sustained 1% of year over five years, which is impressive based on our, our prior performance. So if we can sustain, that will look different every year. So that will be this year, learning recovery. But next year, it might be, you know, first instruction in all classrooms.
Yeah, no, no. And again, so just in the math guide, it's, it's, it's good to see an aggressive goal like that. It was really interesting to see over time how we reduce the variation, you know? If it's always just going to do this, here's where we're, here's these projects to tighten that up so that we are always trending up. Like, that's, that's a really cool thing to see. I hope to see that.
Totally. And also, I do think, I appreciate you including that, that it's put us in the top 5% across the state. I mean, that's impressive. The other thing, I don't want to add additional goal because I think this is good, but I also wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind adding, always paying attention to why we're doing this. And partly, from, from my perspective, one of the major reasons I want this to happen is more kids graduating A through G ready. So they have the option to go to college if they want. And so paying attention, my belief is if we succeed in this, we will, we will see a direct impact on number of kids actually taking calculus or data sets, whatever they need for that third-year math to get into A through G. And so I wonder if somehow tracking that, tracking that assumption, because actually, if we got this and didn't get that, it wouldn't be what we're actually looking for.
All right. So moving on to our annual goal, as I referenced earlier, our initial thinking is that for students who are identified for targeted math or English language arts intervention through our learning recovery model, we will look for 85% of students in those grade bands to meet or exceed their growth target. So we have a slightly different structure for grades 3 through 8 than we do for 9 through 12. So that's why you see the bullet points there. So for grades 3 through 8, we will measure whether they're meeting their growth target through the MAP assessment, the measures of academic progress. And then for grades 9 through 12, we are not currently giving the MAP assessment at those grade levels. So we will use the IXL diagnostic to measure whether students are meeting or exceeding one year of growth.
Is that new? Like, have we just started using IXL this last year?
Yes.
And you guys liked it?
We use it in special ed. We just started to do the diagnostic, but only for high school because middle school and sixth grade, they were doing their math testing right at the end of the year. So we'll be touching base on IXL in the next study.
We did use it in summer school, I can say, this year. And so we did, you know, just being out on campus, talking to teachers, when they got a chance to dig into the data, they, it was, they found it very, very helpful. That's a couple teachers that were working with the summer, but we did not wait to begin. But candidly, we had nothing other than grades at high school, other than CASP and other grades. So having something in high school that really allows us to look at this is significant.
So I have a question. I'm a little bit confused on this. So the, the five-year goal, which I appreciate, we'll talk about this later, but I'm worried about the grain size, large of all this, that we're doing everything for everybody, and it's hard to succeed in that, especially when you start. So the, so the five-year goal starts with the entire system is going to move. The annual goal is just for learning, for kids on learning recovery. We're only, so we're paying attention, five years thing, but we're actually only annually paying attention to a subset of them. Talk to me about the thinking of why you did that.
So I think we want to target a specific group and really make sure that our staff who are supporting the students have the training and expertise they need in order to provide targeted intervention. So our initial thinking is, we will focus on this group of students and move them. If we can move them in the system, it helps our overall performance as a district for year one.
Got it.
And then we'll reconvene and maybe have additional dialogue about, okay, now that we've gotten through year one, and we see, here was the performance for that group of students, here's how it impacted our overall achievement as a district, what do we want to focus on for year two?
Makes a lot of sense. Can you give me the 30-second version of how someone gets identified for learning recovery?
Yes. 30 seconds?
Well, give me, you don't need to give me the whole, but just the general thing of how you.
So at the elementary level, and Dr. McDonald can speak to this as well, we have universal screeners. So essentially, we have a spreadsheet that looks at multiple measures to show student performance over time. Some of those might be nationally norm tests, like MAP assessment if it's for that grade level. And some of them are more classroom-based assessments. So it might be a running record, looking at phonics, so other identifiers that show that a student is on track, on target, to meet those grade level standards. So if a student is identified as not meeting those target areas, they have a, we have conditional formatting on our spreadsheet, so it turns a different color code. So the teacher has a visual representation of, you know, the student's underperforming in three out of the four areas, they're targeted for intervention.
Okay.
So that has already been.
And ultimately, it starts with the teacher putting this forward for intervention?
Correct.
And is the teacher singular, is there, is there a chat, or if a teacher proposes it, it's automatically, that student will receive it? Or is there a process, then it begins?
Dr. McDonald, do you want to speak to the elementary?
So teachers would individually rank their students based on the multiple measures?
Based on need. So topping the biggest need, okay.
And then they would get together with their PLC and usually a facilitator like the principal or the coach, and they would go through that because there's limited space.
So there's 10 slots, between the PLC, you determine, you negotiate who the 10 biggest need are?
Right. And sometimes the, you know, the, and the teacher will say, well, this student, I have the student too, and I don't see it. So there's that dialogue. Eventually, we get down to that intervention.
Okay. Good.
The other, the other piece I wanted to add that Beth touched on was, this goal makes sense for this year because we're doing learning recovery. The other big piece you know we're doing is the systems investigation.
Right.
So what that yields may change this goal in year two, but this is our year one.
So that was my next question. I'm glad you're right, because this concerns me. I think you're right. I think I'm glad we're doing this. But it does concern me because this is contingent on one-time dollars and a lot of hiring with one-time dollars. And so it's possible next year, we won't have any. So what happens if this, how do you factor that into a five-year goal when we don't know what year two is going to look like in a, in a huge way?
One of the pieces is, and we've been upfront, and what you expressed was a fear that actually, a lot of our teachers have said, wow, we're doing all this work for a year, and, and what happens if it goes away? Well, there's a couple pieces that will go with that. One is, we want to impact these kids this year with the resources. So we're, we know that. We're wanting to learn, and that's why in the learning loss piece, you'll see, one of the key pieces we want to do is learn, how can we best serve students needing intervention? And if we can find some high-leverage areas, then what we, we have several options. One is, we can redirect resources to expand and continue some of these areas, especially using supplemental and categorical funds. Second, we did get some additional state funding to deal with learning loss. So we're hoping to hopefully expand some of this a second year. So part of this is, we want to learn what works best so that we can either redirect current intervention resources to this. It may not be the scale. The other part is, it will give us time as we work to investigate the system and look at different, you know, intervention cycles or initiatives to try to support. Because we unfortunately have a consistent need to intervene. So we want to learn about that and then extrapolate that, learn from it, build on it, and maybe there's another piece with it.
So I totally appreciate that. And I will say that, like, speaking, probably for the whole board, but certainly for myself, is that I know we're doing some research on this, this investment. And this is direct work, we're going to get data out of. As we plan next year for the budget, and we sit down, and if we lose this one-time funding or it's going to, and we have to make some hard decisions, the more data we have around the effectiveness of this, the more helpful it is to us to make those hard decisions.
And we're targeting our research to do our, to have our best understanding in that, honestly, in that really, you know, between that February, March zone, when we have to, when the board has to make those budget decisions. So we know we won't have a full year of data, but we'll have to make the best decisions with the best data we have at the time.
Just one more, and I hate to get into the details, I apologize. So we say for the 85% of students in grade 3 through 8 that meet or exceed, do we have a rough ballpark number? Is that 20 kids, 150 kids, 11,000 kids ballpark?
Let's see. So for elementary, they will be targeting. So for elementary, they will be targeting. I think we put the cap at 20 students in a course. And so it will depend on how many rotations they have during the day. So roughly, secondary, 120 students. Elementary may look a little bit different depending on how they schedule their grade bands during their walk to learn, their intervention time.
It'll be 300, 300 or 400 students in elementary that will be in that intervention group on a rotating basis at any given, because it's about 20 for every two grade. That was probably 60 to 80 per school. So, but that will, that will fluctuate.
And at secondary, that's 120 for math, 120 for ELA.
Per school.
240 per school.
That's where I was trying to get to. Got it. Cool. Keep going, sorry.
Our short-term goal, so this aligns with the annual goal. As Superintendent Stock mentioned earlier, we have realigned our MAP assessment windows in order to provide updates in fall, winter, and spring. So we will have updated baselines in October. We'll assess again in December and then April. So we will have updates in terms of our students demonstrating progress towards meeting those growth targets. At the secondary level, again, we'll be using IXL for the high schools. And at the middle school, our one caveat is they may have a combination of MAP assessment and IXL. We just want to be mindful of how much we're assessing students. And they have finals at the end of the year. They will have the CASP summative assessment as well. So we want to make sure that we may be using IXL for one of those checkpoints rather than the MAP assessment in order to provide more instructional time to students.
So a couple of questions. So that makes perfect sense. What doesn't make sense to me, and it just occurred to me, is what we're doing in high school. So there's a huge desert of assessment in high school. And I don't know how we really do this work without understanding. So I think I'm clear, I would like to see us do MAP and all through, I would. But regardless, I understand that it's, it's not my decision to make. In the meantime, we do have data. We do have grades, we do have, we do have something. So how do we think about non-standardized test courses in high school and how we're going to understand progress there?
So their universal screener that we just developed in order for initial placement in these learning recovery courses includes their course grades from the previous two years in both language arts and mathematics. It includes, if they're a freshman, we included MAP data from their seventh and eighth grade year as an indicator. And then we have their IXL data from their spring test that they took. And all students will continue to take the IXL diagnostic so that we can measure progress both for the learning recovery students and all students in our two high schools.
I'd just like to add that, that under Dr. Kathy Pahn, we went out and we've been working on common assessments. In all honesty, it's been very challenging between the two high schools, both in math and language arts. We did agree upon some writing samples that we'll be doing in ninth grade. Last year, because of COVID, that didn't happen, but we do plan on continuing that. In addition to that, with the new science adoption, we are looking at starting out with the new curriculum, having a common assessment in each of those science classes. And the goal would be to build upon that. We're going to have language arts coming back up for new adoption, math coming up for new adoption. And so that is the goal, but in all honesty, it's been very challenging.
I love that goal, and I appreciate you doing it, and keep at it. And we, so in the meantime, though, it doesn't, and what you described is great, but it's all baseline. So there's no, we don't, so again, we do have data. And so I do wonder if there's a way in those courses to say, A through G mathematic courses, non-eleventh grade, C or better is the critical, because then you actually get the credit. So can we track just that? And can we track improvement on the number of kids getting A through G credit with a C or better in year, in place where we don't have standardized assessments? So we have something to look at to understand progress?
Yes. And our goal is to, although that's baseline data, our goal is to continue to capture those components that I talked about. So looking at their course grade, looking at their IXL data moving forward. But we can certainly capture the A through G courses.
Question, how is it determined at the high school level, the testing that we're utilizing, whether it's the MAP or the IXL? I know in the spring, some teachers had shared concern with me about the IXL. How do we decide that moving forward, which approach you're going to take for those grades?
Again, looking back at what special ed had done, and I take full responsibility for the IXL. We did not train them on how to use IXL this spring. We trained them on how to give the diagnostic. And again, the way that was rolled out, I need to recover from that. What Superintendent Stock said, though, is the teachers that we had use it in summer school, because it does correlate with our springboard ELA material. It does correlate with our CPM book. It does also have a correlation with MAP testing. So as teachers got in and really signed, the anger towards Marty for forcing them to do it went away. And I actually, on the 12th, and we'll talk about this in learning loss, we did have learning recovery teachers come in, and we did some training on that. Beth and her team did a great job. And we did bring in teachers from summer school that spoke highly about it. So as they're starting to use it, as Superintendent Stock alluded to, it's starting to, they're starting to get a better understanding. And again, they all will get additional training as soon as we can get that training scheduled and underway.
Okay, good to hear. I'm much more familiar and knowledgeable with MAP. So that's the reason why I lean that way. And so I just want to make sure we're taking into consideration and working with our teachers on that, since they'll be implementing it. Thank you.
And then you're, I guess, as you said before, are we using 2019 as the baseline for these also? Or is this 2020 for learning recovery?
That will be 2020, 2021.
The final thing I'd say before we add on, move on, is that in the annual goals, I do wonder, this is going to seem self, I do wonder if we ought to think about the core growth measure as well. And the reason being, I know NWA believes, and they will say, that it directly correlates to Sback scores. And I think there's some truth to it, but there's some not truths to that. Where core actually is the Sback. And if our, if our five-year goal is Sback, and we're not looking at Sback until the fifth year, if we did the core growth measure, you would be looking at the same measure along the way. So maybe something, even if it doesn't come forward, it's something for you all to be looking at, knowing there's a direct line.
Great suggestion. Thank you.
Were we able to get core growth measure between 19 and now with no CASP?
Uh, yes, but it's wonky.
Okay, that was, because I agree with.
The same way we can predict 11th grade using eighth grade, you can do it, but it's really wonky.
Okay.
So you, so I would not, I would not make major to say, I certainly wouldn't evaluate or do anything like that. But if you generally say, here's how our system we think is going, it can be helpful, and that's it. And then the longer we go on, the better it's going to get.
Okay. And then in the final slide, we have, we are looking at two of our elementary campuses who are currently Title I schools. As Trustee Miller mentioned earlier, we know that the performance at our schools within our district varies. And so we want to be intentional about the supports we're providing to the staff so that they can best address the needs of students at our individual sites. So Parker Whitney Elementary School and Rockland Elementary School will be identified as our pilot schools to engage in PDSA cycles with their staff. We want to make sure that we engage with the staff before we set what the goals are and what grade level bands we're looking towards. We know that upper grades, so fourth through sixth grade, tends, we see a decline in terms of their overall performance. So we will be looking to target those areas. So more specifics to come in terms of what those PDSA cycles look like. So we will be providing updates as we have a chance to engage with those sites.
And that is, that will be, those will begin this, in the fall, not like in the spring.
Just looking back, I think it was slide four, where you had the, more, maybe, there you go. So again, at that, at that standpoint, this data was taken from this year?
This is 2019 CASP.
2019 CASP. Okay, but then, so just Rockland was 65%, but then we were saying it was 62.9? I'm trying to understand the difference.
This is elementary only.
Okay. Okay, so overall, we were 63. Okay. All right. Cool, thank you.
Good, Ken.
But, but our goal was not elementary only, our goal was system-wide.
That's correct, system-wide.
So I think, I love the elementary folk, I love the power folks, that's great. And I don't actually even need you to update this with our goals. But when we have our learning sessions, I think it'd be important to be clear what your goal, what the goals for these, and then how PDSA is, what we learned from that, and how we're meeting, towards meeting our goals. And it would be important that they have goals, they're clear on what they're trying to get at.
Yeah, so I guess from a dashboard perspective, here's where we're at, here's where we want to be. And then you can take it down a couple of layers as far as to the school, to the level, to whatever, yeah. And then obviously, the goal that here gets to A to B to C, so you can get to the overall goal, right?
I appreciate your intent to collaborate with them, because that is the best way, you know, as you know, to bring people along. And I think that that's great, that you're trying to be specific, but also including them. And we look forward to hearing what you guys say. So thanks for your work on this.
And then just lastly, a recap of what our work will look like for this year. So in the fall semester, from August to December, we're looking to reconvene the Math Improvement Committee that Dr. McDonald helped facilitate last year in the spring, including teachers, site and district administrators. So I believe our first meeting is scheduled for September. Then we will conduct a systems investigation where we identify problems and root causes based on the initial thinking of that team and develop an aim statement, including measurable goals and using a driver diagram as one of our tools. And again, we will be providing updates to the board during our workshops. In the spring, from January to June, we will be conducting initial PDSA's at the site level and in specific classrooms, consolidating and sharing that PDSA learning piloting common assessments, which Trustee Miller referred to earlier at the secondary level. I don't think we covered this. We will be starting with Integrated One as our first course in terms of a goal. So we're not tackling all of them at the same time. We know many of our teachers teach multiple sections and different courses. So we'll be starting there. And then again, we will be providing updates to the board for that spring semester in terms of all those facets of work. And again, our overall goal is to determine what works well in our system and what we need to continue. And when we're investing additional resources, how do we sustain some of those efforts, even if the funding may shift?
Intent of the investigation is really to ensure that collaboration and buy-in is we all work to figure out, why are we getting the results we are, and what do we want to change? So you can see, that's where, using the one-time resources and the urgency of learning recovery, that's the initial focus. So we immediately begin action. We also have a couple targeted pieces, a couple of elementaries in the fall, is we get, build a collaborative base in the fall to go bigger in the system. So there is that work now, but also recognizing that we need the time to truly create that collaborative environment and buy-in of understanding where we're at in the system. So the nice part about the pairing is there's immediate action while we're building collaboration to sustain system-wide action.
So at the end of June 22, we'll have feedback from just those two schools? And the overall program, but mainly those two schools?
In terms of the PDSA cycle?
Okay.
I think we'll also have an idea about system-wide where we want to push in the following year. So, because we may, I mean, it may be first instruction, it may be curriculum, we don't know. But we won't know until we do the investigation. I think that will be a conversation to launch that next year in terms of where we're going.
For the many parents, I'm sure, listening in right now, could you identify for us PDSA cycle? Is that just our cycle of learning improvement?
Yes. So it's Plan, Do, Study, Act is one of our many acronyms in education.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
President Counter.
Yeah, so just, so I just want to join Rashawn and everyone, thank you, this is great work. And the collaboration, I think, is particularly important. The other thing I say is I appreciate the leading with continuous improvement and improvement science. And I think it's an important part of the journey. And so a critical part about improvement science, one is predictions. And so making sure that work with what we think is going to happen and see if that didn't happen. The other key part of this is it's about the learning journey. And in a learning journey, you're not going to always be successful. So I appreciate your point of, we're going to check, we're going to see. Is it curriculum, is it instruction, what, and how are we going to do it? But what I also would ask is in our board study workshops, in particular, that we model that with ourselves, which is, don't come with everything at work. Let's talk about what didn't work. Let's talk about why it didn't work and talk about how we're responding. And unless we're having those real conversations, it's, I think it's not the intent of what we're trying to do as a board. And we're trying to, we're trying to acknowledge where we made mistakes, where it didn't work, so we can figure it out and move forward. And I think we all want to sort of move in that direction. So appreciate your leadership here.
Especially in such a unique year, where we've got some extra money and we're trying to be sure that we're using it, utilizing it the way that is going to give us long-lasting results. Yeah, really important. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just, again, saying the same thing, but just from a plus delta standpoint. So hey, what worked and what didn't work, we could change it. And again, you know, totally humble, no one's, oh my gosh, hey, we tried this, failed. All right, now we know what not to do, and we move forward, so.
And I want to just thank the board for putting the resources. And literally, you gave us, gave me feedback six weeks ago or so, and then to be able to turn around and provide this prior to the start of the year. But that wouldn't have happened without the board putting, investing the resources to allow us to do that. So, President Counter, we're on to the third item. And just for the record, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. And so we, and so our next item is learning recovery. We know that this is a significant area that the board, you know, had set for us is to really ensure that our students that had any impacts from COVID, academic, social, emotional, we work to restore them. And so this item will be led by Marty and Bill with support from Stacy and Beth.
Okay. I love that we're ahead of schedule. Good afternoon, everybody. I'll talk really slow. We want to use our full two hours. So we're here tonight, today, to share, and tonight, to share learning recovery updates with the board, things that have happened over the summer, things that are happening now, and where we're headed in the current school year. And again, answer your questions and take your feedback in terms of our process and how we're moving forward. We had some key questions here, too. What are the learning gaps? How do we measure them? What have we found? Who is most impacted? How are we going to do this learning recovery, particularly for those students who are most impacted? And what are we doing now, the summer, next year, next summer? So in this update, we'll be able to talk about last summer and then what we're doing to start the year this year and what we'll carry through this year. We do have a theory of action, and that is if we employ this learning recovery, the teachers and staff to implement high-quality intervention curriculums with fidelity in a system of social-emotional supports, then student achievement will increase and performance gaps will decrease so that all students will have better college and career opportunities. There are a whole lot of variables in there, and we'll talk about some of those today. In terms of a goal, this is absolutely aligned with what Ms. Davidson was talking about. So in learning recovery, not just for math, but also for ELA, we are focusing on students who are participating in those interventions. So we've hired literally millions of dollars of teachers and staff to work with these students, and we expect them to make progress on MAP. Typically, the typical student right now is, is about, we had about 50% of students meeting their growth target. So within, and a growth target in MAP is established on where you are for every individual student. It basically sets an individual goal for each student based on their prior test. So, and that, on average, nationally, students should meet that goal. It's a nationally averaged norm. So what we hope is by giving more to these students, we should see at least 85% of them meeting this personal goal throughout this process. And I think that's very realistic. If this is working, we will see that them meeting that growth target. Because again, it's really not based on some arbitrary number. It's based on where they're starting and where they're ending. So I think it's very realistic. Marty, do you want to talk about?
Real quick, and it'll go into both. For the individual child or student in the group, when they have that individual assessment and we have the goal, when they hit it, does that translate to a grade?
No, it translates to, it's like a RIT score, it's a number, a scale at a nationally norms.
I'm just trying to get back to, so, you know, as a kid, I went through this, great, you achieved something. You don't see it in a, in a grade or a report card, just a attaboy, way to go, keep moving?
No, I would hope to see it in their grade, absolutely, in the classroom. That would be the goal, right? We want to see that.
Although, just to be clear, so I think what you're saying is you would, if they do well in MAP, their grade will reflect it, is what we hope to do. But to be clear, I actually don't think we should share MAP scores with parents. Like, there are some things that are intended, because then it becomes an accountability tool, and it's thought of differently. And right now, it's for teachers, for instruction, to allow them to improve. And so, so again, to be clear, anyone can get it, you can access, any parent's allowed to access. But the idea of putting it out there changes what the purpose of it for. And I think you need to have both. have both. And we have accountability tools through report cards and through the SFAK and through others. And we have learning tools. And I think it's important to have them be, serve their own purposes.
And our, as our board knows, in our elementary school, we don't have a letter grade system. We have a standards-based approach. So really, the conversation that elementary teachers have with parents and even with students is around, these are the skills you're at, these are the pieces you need to do to move to the standard. So the, it is that conversation, the context of that improvement. And so the interventions are targeted at those skills and areas that would move a student on that progression. So if I'm sitting down at a parent conference with a third-grade parent, then I might be talking about, here's areas that they need to improve in, here's some things we're going to do to help your child, and maybe some of the intervention pieces. And then you, at the next kind of marking period, you can show either progress or not. So there's, it's part of a context of that conversation that we're using. And so that's how we prefer parents to think about it, is my child progressing in their learning?
Oh, yeah. I guess where I'm trying to go translate, and it's fair. So if, if at target is what, a two or three, isn't it? So in theory, Derek Counter, fifth-grade math, if I'm at a two or one, I should be in this group, we should be working to it. And by the, by the time we get to the end of this, I should be at least a three or better. So you can, it does tie back. I just want to show that the kid is that, hey, I'm seeing the progress, I'm achieving something. And it's somewhat of a reward, like we're doing the right thing.
Right. And teachers, you discuss all kinds of things, you know, letters, you know, younger students, you know, amount of sight words being recognized or pieces like that. So there are different fluency pieces. So there's a lot of, in those rich conversations. And what we really want as parents to understand, that richness of all these pieces that move a child's learning versus did I hit a number or letter? And then in secondary, we do transfer to more of that, you know, that traditional piece, still using our no mark of not letting time be the, be determine the learning. And so again, we still keep that concept much more alive than most school systems do around, how do we help students achieve that learning? And so that's what we really want, is that continual conversation around how do we keep the learning moving versus, you know, did you, did you hit a number or letter in a fixed time?
Sorry, real quick, so just, and again, the nice part about looking at it that way, at the end of the year, whether we have a MAP score and as a reason or IXL, you could theoretically take the percent of kids that are three or better and three to eight, and it should be, you know, we're 85% of all those students, you should be able to tie it back to just our own grades. And if they're the same, then hey, we're doing the right thing. So that way, it's not funky to where I hit it in MAP, but I didn't hit it in actuality. So I'm just, I'm trying to tie it all together and frame.
And I think that also comes to some of the other piece of tying it back to like the A through G, for example, in high school. If we do all this and a student still can't pass a course that qualifies them to be eligible for college, then the outcome really isn't met. So there is, I think, in teams of looking like that, like you've measured, mentioned as well, is, does that really, what we're doing, impact an outcome? Or does it not, even though we're doing all this and we see growth, it really doesn't change an outcome that frankly, kids have to meet or are measured by externally?
I was just going to share, as a parent with a daughter, before she was enrolled at Rockland Unified, for several years, her teacher would sit down and go over actually her MAP results with her. And I actually found that really beneficial as a parent. Not that it should be mandated or have to happen, but I did find it very beneficial because a grade, there could be such a variation, right? You could receive actually the same grade in a subject every year, but there's, there's so many nuances to that, that obviously the teacher can address. But there is a benefit as a parent for me to be able to track and see, are we, are we improving? And it also gave encouragement to our daughter in some of the areas that maybe started a little lower than she had preferred. We were able to have good dialogue at home and say, our goal is to move along this colored path. So I just throw that out there from a parent perspective. Obviously, I think our teachers, they'll be able to navigate those conversations with parents, and that may not always be necessary. But in some cases where a student may be getting the same, it may not be letter grade or number grade, I actually believe the MAP could come in and be an additional source that can really help engage parents. And I think we all want to engage parents more in their kids' education as much as we can. So I just throw that out there to anybody listening. From a parent perspective, I really appreciated being able to see the MAP score and talk through that with her teacher.
I appreciate you saying that because one of the things we've learned through interventions, as you said, someone far below basic that makes great strides, they may not hit that meets or exceeds, but they've made tremendous amount of growth, and that's still cause for celebration. Because you never want to have a kid that works so hard, but then at the end, he didn't, he didn't get it. Lot of celebration. And that's some of the things Beth and her team are talking about with these learning recovery teachers. Let's celebrate every win because the students in these courses are kids that traditionally haven't been successful. So I think, other comment?
No, and I think there's, there's value in the goal setting, too. Trustee said off that the kids that sit with their teacher and their parents and set goals. So, and we have many teachers in Rockland who actually do that with this and other assessments. And trustee Counter, I think you're also talking about generalizing this learning from the interventions into the classroom. And I think, I mean, no intervention would be successful if we weren't generalizing it, right? So that is absolutely the hope of what we're doing.
Going back to Dr. McDonald's first question, as far as nine through 12 with IXL, again, we continue to participate with professional development to learn. I will invite anyone that would like to join us. I did pay for a training for our principals, administrators on how to look at the program and everything it entails. That training, I believe Beth was setting that up for our first SLT, which is September 15th, mid-September, but I'd be happy to give that if you wanted to come to that training. Yes. But this is specific for administrators on how to follow along to ensure that students are participating and kid, teachers are holding students accountable. So I'll get further information out on that.
Part of what Beth's work, too, is beyond, you know, Marty and Bill's support, is to work with coaching principals and how to engage, monitor, support their interventions and their other areas. So we, beyond supporting the teachers, we also want to support the site principals and their work as well. And so you can see a whole system of support. And part of that goes by, how do you understand, how do you use what you have and what your teachers have versus just going in and doing, you know, good job, glad to see you have the book open, which our principals do much more.
So our short-term goals match our annual goal. Roger mentioned earlier that we have aligned the testing windows with our board updates. So we're going to be able to provide data multiple times throughout the year in terms of meeting this goal, which I think will be a really great conversation and let us know if we are doing the right things as we move forward.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I did them. Everything Bill just said. I'm sorry. I mean, the, our presentation's kind of broken up as far as what we've done and what we've already started. So I was looking ahead and all honesty to that. So I'm just going to pass right now on comment because I, all honesty, doesn't pay attention.
It's just the, the short-term goals for high school in terms of how you're measuring?
And one of those things that we're still learning is, is this appropriate, a 20, 30-point goal? I was not able to participate in the training the other day, so I would turn that over to Beth.
So the explanation we were given by the IXL trainer, who is actually a former high school principal and teacher, who has been fantastic so far, was that the IXL diagnostic gives a score, and it's, so like if you were a second grader, your score would be between 200 and 300. If you were below 200 at the start of the year, you'd be below grade level. And if you were above that span, I think they give like a 20 or 30-point differential, then you'd be above grade level. So in the course of a year, we would want a student to gain 100 points essentially, to move to that next grade level band. And so her recommendation was that, on average, students we're targeting should make between 20 and 30 points gained per month in order, including breaks and so on and so forth, in order to make more than a year's progress if we're providing intensive intervention to them. So we want them, we know that they're behind some of their peers in terms of their academic performance. So in order for them to make up some of those gains, we want to see a 20 to 30-point increase per month.
I love that. That's, I love the tangibility of that and specifically the pushing towards grade level. I think it's very actionable, it's very clear, and it's very helpful. Great.
Beth, I have a question. I hear a lot about measuring and about assessment, and I haven't heard anything yet about what we're doing to improve the teaching, to improve the curriculum or the materials used to teach the kids. So we keep talking about how we're measuring their growth, but how are we creating the growth?
Great question. So our learning recovery teachers are going through a series of trainings where they have a lot of collaboration time to talk about. Our high schools and middle schools have intervention structures already in place that they're utilizing. But I think an area for growth for us is to look at the metrics. So how are we measuring whether those current interventions are successful? And now we're adding this other layer of learning recovery on top of it. So I think that will help in that regard. So they're already utilizing some strategies that are research-based, that they've found to be effective. So there's a lot of dialogue and collaboration at the secondary level right now in terms of what the instruction looks like and then what their needs are. So we've asked them what additional resources they need in terms of intervention curriculum, some training on how to use the IXL, which is a diagnostic tool, but it's also skill-based. So the students can have intentional focused practice on areas of need. That could be prerequisite skills that are needed for the student to be successful in their current grade level course, or it could be in their current course, how do we make sure that they're continuing to make progress so that they can meet the A through G requirements? So, and those are aligned to their textbooks. So our adopted curriculum, it has, if they were struggling in, I don't know, Unit Two on linear functions, they could go in and look at the lesson in the textbook, read the examples there, and then have aligned practice so that they have kind of that repetition of skill. And then during the training, the teachers receive some guidance on how they can facilitate small group instruction in order to really target those areas of need. Because we want to make sure we have a balance between independent practice of the student, but also what role does the teacher play in terms of increasing their skill set?
So what I'm really wondering is, and that was, thank you, that was a very thorough answer, but what, what I'm wondering beyond that is, how is this above and beyond what teachers already are doing, what they always have been doing as far as keeping track of where the kids are, having extra needs, and then taking care of those extra needs? What are we doing that's new that we didn't do before?
So at the secondary level, our elementary teachers, their learning recovery, professional development will happen once school starts because they have a window of time before students are populated into those courses. So we'll be doing very similar work with them. At the secondary level, having the opportunity to do small group instruction with a lower number of students in the class is not an opportunity that most secondary teachers have. And so the structure of the class, the number of students in there, having to use an instructional aid, being able to utilize them to run different stations is a structure that will be new and different for many of the students and the teachers as well. And at the elementary level, they are running a walk-to-learn model in language arts, but the math piece is new. So some of our sites have done some work in terms of math intervention, but we've never targeted it as a district-wide goal in terms of having dedicated time that's focused on small group intentional instruction in the area of math. So what they're receiving is really has been their core instruction with a room that has a really diverse group of kids in terms of their needs and abilities.
But we're focusing on it, but we don't have any different materials or different systems or different training than we have had in the past?
We do have, so at the elementary level, we have Benchmark has intervention materials that we'll be using and Bridges as well. So there is specific curriculum to focus on intervention. And then in language arts, we have LLI as a curriculum. So we will be providing training to those learning recovery teachers specific to, in a small group setting, how do you utilize these intervention materials to, to structure and teach an intervention course? So that training will be different than what they've received as a general education classroom teacher.
To Julie's, can I, I'm going to follow, because it's confusing to me as well, and I appreciate this. And so, because what I'm hearing, and I may just be hearing it wrong, is that the bulk of the intervention is the specialist. And so outside the classroom, the intervention going on could have huge impact. Obviously, if we're doing this well, the intervention specialist will work closely with the teacher, they will try and, there's no guarantee of that. So I appreciate you, this line of question, because I'm also unclear on, especially if we end up losing these, like what happens to have meaningful, long-lasting change in the classroom if there's no connection between the bulk of the intervention?
And honestly, to add to that, when we get a new curriculum, we have training on the, the core curriculum and also on the interventions. And as a teacher, I know in my classroom, I have intervention groups within my groups, within my core curriculum. And I, kids who aren't understanding certain concepts, I take a side into a small group and we work on those concepts. And I use the intervention materials that are provided in the core curriculum. So my concern is, I mean, it's awesome that we are having more training on how to do that, but I don't know that just using what we already have is enough to grow to, I mean, teachers in general are always doing that. They're always looking at, who do I need to work more with? Who isn't getting it? Who can I pull aside? I mean, that's kind of part of the job, right? So I'm, I'm, it sounds like we're just sort of pushing a little harder on standard teaching practice. And so I'm wondering, what are we doing besides standard teaching practice and intervention teachers? And like Rick said, what are we doing that's going to have long-lasting potential?
So, just to be clear, in elementary school, the curriculum for intervention is different. And so we're using Fuentes and Pennell Level Literacy Intervention, which is different from the core.
But that's the pull-out curriculum. When you go in intervention, you have a different curriculum. I get that, but it doesn't change the baseline.
And the Bridges intervention is not something that's used in the classroom, and teachers aren't trained in it. So that is a different piece that kids will not get. So, but you're correct that the learning recovery is the intervention this year. And this goes back to our prior conversation because we're not trying to change the whole system and provide first instruction training until we know that that's the right thing. I mean, is it right? Do we need to retrain all our teachers? Is that, is that the problem? Do we need new curriculum? Is, you know, is that the issue? So until we identify what that is, I think we'd be getting ahead of ourselves to invest in that major overhaul of training, right? So, so yes, this year, we are, we are focused on this learning recovery piece. Next year, though, and in following years, we could have staff training and new curriculum and all those other pieces.
So as part of that investigation, are we looking at schools that have higher math scores and looking at what they're doing that is getting them those higher math scores? And that's part of the investigation?
Yes.
I think part of the desire to is, and this doesn't necessarily change what we're doing, but just throwing that out there, of this extra money we have right now, I think there's this worry that we may not have it down the road. As of right now, we won't have it down the road. And so I think we just want to get a multiplication effect of the money, right? Of what can we invest the money in this year that we get benefit from five, six, seven years down the road? Not to say having more opportunities for students to have smaller groupings or intervention isn't positive. I actually really value that because I think, I think we actually will see incredible growth because of that. I think, at least for me, part of the concern would be, we may possibly be setting up a model that requires this ongoing funding. And if that's the best-case scenario, that's the best case. But I just wonder if maybe a segment of that could be, what's something we can put some of this money towards, that we learn something from, that we can implement and not have to refund every year, if that makes sense?
Yes.
I guess in, in theory, based on the goal, we have that targeted group. Was it 240 kids at high school and 250-ish kids in high school, you do 85%. If you move them up the scale, then what's left over is that 15% in each of those groups that we need to. So even if we had to have more targeted intervention, you're targeting a smaller group. So it theoretically shouldn't cost you as much. But I'm with you, if, if all we're doing is taking, I mean, not all, if we're taking and we're focusing in always on that group and trying to get this group, whatever the size, up to standard, but we're never improving this, all we're doing is essentially just putting more water in the ocean to avoid, to not see the rock. Like, at some point, you got to move everybody, like, you got to move this higher up so that it makes this group jump higher. You know, you raise the bar is where I'm going.
Which is why that annual measure of looking at all students in the cast really will indicate, is there, are we, are we having that effect? And where are we at in this journey? Because we're starting with kids that have the, you know, most intense needs and kind of working out. And we do want all, all students to, to move. But, but in essence, sometimes these students will take a little bit longer and, and they're more enduring in how we do that i- as we look to do the pieces. I do appreciate that the line of question the board has is, you know, kind of what's the, you know, how and the, you know, the what of what we're going to do. So that we support, like, I know that our learning recovery teachers, for example, will have a monthly PLC with some release to look at data, kind of engage in a little bit like a lesson study type practice of, okay, here's what we have, how do we plan different based on that? Where do we go? So there, there is a, an intentional piece of looking at data together and then planning together what the next pieces are to try to create that piece on, well, maybe we need to have a gap in this material. Is there something we have that helps us deal with fractions better? Because we're struggling to find that. Or we may find a high school teachers are saying, wow, this is really third-grade standard pieces we're dealing with. We don't have that. Can we get something from our elementary? So this will evolve, but we don't want it to be just the, okay, here's assessment or intention, but kind of how is teaching different? What resources are different to have a different impact is exactly.
Curious, is there, to that point, is there a conversation all around combining PLCs, which says, so you have grade level, say, elementary grade level PLCs, and then you have intervention PLCs, which is great. But is there, like, will the intervention specialists actually take place in a grade level PLC to bring their knowledge to the table as well?
Yes.
So the intervention specialists will be alternating between the grade level PLC that they represent, and then we will bring them all together to have dialogue as well.
That's huge, that's very huge.
And, and although there is, there is probably a need to do training with all our teachers in mathematics, because we haven't done that in several years. I think, I'll reiterate, we need to know what the training is. And we also need to think about what Beth mentioned earlier, I'm sure everyone can appreciate, is we're coming back from a very difficult year. If we tried to do staff-wide training this fall, what would happen, Christine? There would probably be a revolution. So, so we are, we are thoughtful about how we roll this out. This is a, this is a way to reach a lot of students with learning recovery teachers, but also keep classroom teachers in a comfortable space so they can do the things you were talking about that we know they're intervening, intervening with, with students in the classroom. Now we have a tier-two option that's gonna give a second base.
So we're realigning and reorienting the system, the whole piece. Like, for example, when I was greeting transportation folks this morning at 7:15, that are maintenance and operations and custodial staff, I talked to them about these overall goals. I talked to them about, by the way, our board's focused on math. And I said, you need to know this as much as the principals did Monday I talked to. And I just told them, ask kids about their math. I go, we want, so part of this too is giving us a space to re-engage that system to have those impacts, but as the targeting. So if we do a training, what are we, you know, what's the specific versus refresher on math? So we want to be real intentional, and, and the reality is, we don't know. And that's the work is to find that out versus spend a lot of resources and say, let's do a refresher in reading or math. And, and then it's just teachers glaze over, oh, I've seen this, I do this, versus, our data says this is a real need in classrooms, and we're gonna target this piece to support you. That's what we want to look at doing. And we have some even ideas around next year's summer of how do we do training there? And then at teacher's practice on kids that need help and do the cycle. So we have all kinds of fun things, this, this is so much better to talk about than. And so you can see that we don't want to do what, there's a lot of cynicism in education because it's, oh, I've seen this, when will this pass? Having a long-term goal helps us not have that. Having it specific to the data of our kids and then targeting makes people buy into, this is a real thing I need to have an impact in my room today versus, oh, this must be the math flavor this year. This must be the reading flavor next year.
And to stay on with that, is there anything that we currently do within math or in reading that we're taking away so that it's not perceived as one more thing? I know it's a tough one, but like, you're right, if I've got 10 things to do and I'm adding on 11, it's tough to.
I think we're potentially not adding this year. So that's a, that's a weak answer, but I think when we decide to add, we can, we can think about that. Because we may need to change some things.
But I would also add that, that we did invest in more people. So, so math teachers are still gonna teach math, but the learning recovery teachers will focus on that. So we're not asking them to do more necessarily, because we did hire that human investment to help out.
Can I back up a little too? Sorry, you thought we were done. It's, it's not about what we were talking about, I was just waiting until we got past that. I just have a really specific question on the IXL, because I've, I heard a lot in the spring. And now, mind you, I have no idea how it all went, I'm just gonna share what I heard. And, and if we learn from it, that's fantastic answer too. But the student experience was that, so they get this number and it says, you know, if I'm in 10th grade, I should be in the, in the 10s, right? Well, they took the test, and I'm guessing they immediately saw it because it was like, wait, I have an A in this class and I scored in the sixth grade level? So, and it wasn't only kids, it was staff saying that as well. Is that the standard where you take the IXL diagnostic and you immediately see your score? Does a student see that?
Yes, a student has access to that.
Okay. So how, how can we roll that out so that students have a realistic expectation that this is what they're going to see and also what that means for them?
Yeah, so one of the things we did as part of the training is we put together a template, and we explained to principals that before you sign a student up for this, we want to share this with their parents. That it's not only this one test, because I've received a number of calls. I have an A in the class, and now you're gonna put me in. That's not the case, it's multiple measures, as Beth explained. So we will be sending that out, explaining that, explaining to parents that they will have access, as Rick alluded to. They're gonna have access to go in and take a look at IXL, to see where their kids are strong at and where they're weak at. So it's just an educational thing that we have to do. So principals, principals will be sending out that letter. And then we will continue to educate our parents and students on the benefits that they're seeing through this intense intervention.
Did our staff feel like those results were accurate?
No, we did receive from one high school, a number, just as you had said, kids that, that put forth effort, but, but didn't see the benefits of it. However, as we went through and we looked at that scores, you could look at how much time kids spent on it and look at their grade. And one of the things that I forgot as we did this is, our AP tests were extended out this year. So we had a number of kids take that, that were still involved in taking AP tests and stuff. So that's where we kind of look at and analyze it. You know, was it the right timing to do that? The problem was, we needed to do that to get a baseline to use that in the summer school.
I understand the timing.
Yeah.
I was behind the timing, even though we didn't do, as a board, a very good job explaining the why. For wanting that at that time. I, I, I want to be sure that it's reflective and accurate. And also I appreciate, you know, that we do a better job to our students, especially our secondary students that really understand and, you know, were concerned about it and to their families.
Yeah, I, I did receive a number of questions from the math department at Whitting High School that I turned over to IXL, and they went through and explained all that. That information has been shared. And again, we will be sharing that out with the learning recovery as we continue to educate all involved in the use of IXL.
Okay.
Are there components of IXL, and we don't need to get too much into the weeds, but I'm just thinking, I do think the students seeing that immediate number, right? There's a lot of conclusions they make before they ever get to have that interaction with the teacher. And not to say that we don't want to not use IXL for that one reason, but are we finding IXL has so many other benefits that can assist the teacher? Is that why we're going that route instead of the MAP test?
Once again, this is additional supportive information. MAP, you take, it, it gives you that information, but, and I'll allude to this later on, but at the secondary level, you know, middle school, you have 140 kids, high school, 200 plus. With a mastery learning concept, you're constantly teaching and moving forward. So even though they have interventions, in all honesty, those interventions are really to keep up on that current content information. It's not necessarily there to fill those gaps. So this is an opportunity for those students that need those gaps to be filled to have additional support that focuses on their weakest areas.
And the MAP assessment in high schools are not as reliable. And we'll find one of the biggest needs of assessment in K-12 is, not secondary, is high school. The, the MAP pieces, when we get into, is just not as reliable, doesn't give us the data, especially beyond integrated one. So the IXL is a way that we can look at, then a student in an AP course can take that, and we can get some read on that. And then also, we're using kind of nationally-normed assessments to give us a benchmarking piece as well. So it's not just like us, but is, how, where are we measuring? Because we would hate to measure grade here, but then our kids go to compete to get into, say, colleges and universities, and they struggle. And so, and the other piece is, we want to make sure they're ready for credit-bearing work when they hit university colleges versus two years of remediation. So having a norm, reference, a national norm helps us look at that as well. And the MAP just beyond into high school just isn't as reliable. And so we're working with the IXL, because that's why we have this data desert you've referred to. And we would love for the state to have us use CASP differently, but they have mandated 11th grade, which is beyond any logic.
Makes total sense, definitely trust your judgment there. Just concerned about that number, the student seeing it, taking a test, they have a B in a class, right? They're a 10th grader, and they get a number that says sixth, seventh grade. So if we could somehow communicate that to the student, the parent ahead of time, so they don't go home, you know, reminds me of my first year in college, my first math class, right? I got, I got the number on the paper, I actually cried, and I had to wait till office hours. And office hours was two days later, and the teacher informed me I actually got an A minus. I thought I had a C, and I got an A minus because I didn't understand how the bell curve worked, right? And so I just don't want to see our high school students getting put through that same process.
We'll be sure to educate them.
Does, does the IXL tie to the ESA, or ESAs for math?
Uh, that, do you know?
Does the IXL data, as far as a, your number range, so if you're between six and seven, or, you know, eight, 700, 800, does it tie to the individual MAP ESAs that are components of it? So hey, like, you know, I'm at this point, you should be able to get these first two ESAs, but not those? Or is there any relation, or is it just?
I don't know how their score is disaggregated in terms of looking at different domains and how they might relate, but we can certainly look into that.
President Counter, I'm looking, I'm just, and I took in the opportunity to kind of, what is great about these study sessions with you all is the, the conversation drives where we need to go. Is looking at the PowerPoint, I'm gonna talk to colleagues here, is the conversation threads, I think, have covered quite a bit of the PowerPoint. There is additional information on summer school, how many kids, that you have these, this PowerPoint. I'm gonna suggest to staff that we go ahead and move forward significantly in the slide deck. If, if the board's okay to be able to.
Sorry, one more, and then I will. So the one thing I do want to say, though, is that on the goal, what we ended up doing, we had made some recommendations, totally appreciate you actually made them better, all good. The one, one thing, though, is in, in our recommendation to you, we had, we had considered comparing the performance of those engaged intervention with those not engaged intervention as a way to understand the impact of that. That's missing here. So we will know every kid did well, but we'll have no idea whether it was intervention or every, but if we actually compare, we'll actually have an understanding of what the intervention did. So I would like to request that somehow, in this conversation, we have that. Does that make sense?
I think we can disaggregate the MAP data to show that. We can see growth for.
I just do think as we, as we, we go into a budget conversation next year, that information will be important to us.
Yeah, I get that.
Would you be able to do that for high school if we're not utilizing MAP? Would that just be via IXL?
Sorry. Mr. Johnson continues, continues to look at me in there.
So you'll be able to see that groups utilizing targeted intervention and those aren't, they're still both growing?
Correct.
And so what I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask my colleagues is, and then at the board, you have a lot of information on what we discussed about going forward, training, and also summer school, who was there, how many were at. And so ask us to kind of take a look at moving forward to slide, you know, slide 20, kind of wrapping it up for you on this item, unless there's a lot more questions. There's a lot of background data, but I think the conversation pulled that out. And, and, because I want to make sure the board has time to talk about Corey Trail. We're very excited about that. So why don't we move, go ahead and move forward to slide 20, which is our last one, to kind of wrap this up? And again, happy to bring back any additional items. You know who to contact if you have questions about it, but I think we covered it through the conversation.
Yeah, thanks. This does say secondary learning loss, but I believe this really goes for both elementary and secondary. Again, looking, focusing on that progress and growth that we see through our data systems, the work that Beth will be doing, and again, reporting out with, you know, throughout the year. Continue to work on developing those common assessments, so we do have more, especially at the secondary, you know, ninth and 10th grade level. And then review the secondary MTSS intervention systems. Looking forward to also the social-emotional, we didn't talk about that, but we have purchased curriculum. We will be doing training on that in October 18th. However, all sites will be focusing the year on just returning kids to campus and getting them excited to be back in school. And then finally, the additional supports for students and families. We had talked about parent information nights, and we're still in the process of working on that. What is, what do our parents need from us, and then we will provide that information.
Can I just ask one question about the training on October 18th? Jennifer Hanks is leading, is that for everyone?
That's for both, yeah. They, they did a committee, they met four times this summer, and Jennifer led that committee. It included elementary as well as secondary. Purposeful People is the social-emotional learning for elementary, and Character Strong is for secondary. And we'll be doing training throughout the district on those two curriculums.
I, I also, just in remiss, and I kind of trying to be as efficient, recognize that I know, I'd like to give Stacy just a chance to share some of the work we did with students with disabilities, because we know that's a group that we continue to need to focus on. And so, and especially since she's been so patient in being here. I hate to, want to give her a chance to give voice to some of the work and how we're working in that.
All right, thank you. Yes, so good afternoon again, Superintendent Stock, President Counter, and Board of Trustees. Yeah, so we, we will tie everything that we're working on into what our whole department is working on in regards to the whole MTSS process, social-emotional learning, and math improvement. But specifically, when we're looking at the specific supports, we have hired our instructional coach again for the school year. And so our instructional coach will be focusing in on supporting our intern teachers that we've hired for the year, but also new teachers, and really making sure that they have support in their instruction and curriculum, but also just any kind of classroom management, compliance and IEP paperwork, and really supporting our students and making sure evidence-based practices are in place. We have hired our psychologist who's gonna work on supporting all of our other psychologists. And we'll continue making sure that we have defensible assessments, so she'll help you support that area. But she also is gonna help evaluate some of our data. So as, you know, Marty and Bill and Beth have mentioned, we have been using the IXL data. And so we started with our baseline at the end of last school year. And every student in special ed, except some of our more moderate students, did take the IXL assessments. They also did the assessments throughout ESY. And then we have like assessment windows that we've provided for them to use, that they'll be doing one at the beginning of the year, mid-year, and end of the year. But we're gonna have her kind of overseeing that data collection, making sure that we've got our database that we're reviewing, and making sure that students are provided with appropriate interventions. And then, let's see, we also have our behaviorist, who Beth and I are gonna be working together closely on the role of that position, because we're gonna make sure that we have that tied into that tier-three as part of the MTSS, and for students who have more moderate to severe behavior needs, but also kind of looking at how we keep kids in a least restrictive setting, how we make them successful in their current programs, so that we're not needing to move them to a more restrictive placement. And we have purchased some supplemental curriculum. Speaking of math, we did not have curriculum for special education in the area of math. We were using some intervention curriculum, but mostly they were using the Gen Ed curriculum and kind of adapting it. So for elementary, we've purchased Math U C, which is a multi-sensory approach to teaching math, very hands-on, has the manipulatives. Teachers will be trained on that, and I think that will be very useful for our students who have more significant math disabilities. And then we've also purchased Read 180, which has a portion of, it's called System 44, for students that have more significant like phonological processing deficits. But that's gonna be for students grades fourth through 12th, and who have kind of more significant needs. Students who are in our RSP programs, maybe less mild, mild-moderate disabilities will be using our Sandoe Systems Curriculum, Renaturally, and some of our other interventions. Let's see, we also purchased, I think those are our main interventions. We are training today, we're training all of our new teachers on IXL, just so they, we can make sure that they start off at the beginning of the year doing some of that diagnostic. Even though IXL is, we're using it as a diagnostic assessment, we do have quite a few teachers that like it and are supplementing, supplementary, using it as a supplementary curriculum to supplement with the Gen Ed math area. So that is kind of a summary of what, what we're doing.
I'm excited for you. You have a lot of support this year, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, it's gonna be great, yeah. We're really looking forward to it.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Did you use CARES dollars to purchase?
What's that?
How did you purchase those two, did you use CARES dollars, or how did we, do you know?
Yeah, so we, yeah, it was.
Awesome, thank you.
And again, great work, great assessments, all those things. With all the support, and will there be some metrics, a dashboard, something similar to the other groups? And doesn't, you know, not have the 85% by this one, but is there a way to, to measure the improvement and the assessments and the things you're doing so that in the future, hey, these are good things, we want to continue to continue to support, because we've seen some goals, some things achieved, as opposed to, hey, it's working really good, people like it. It's, I'm sorry, something measurable, something actionable we can work on.
Yeah, I mean, we are one of those targeted groups, so we'll be doing the same measurements as for all students. The difference is that some of our students cannot take MAP, and they cannot take IXL. Yeah, and so those students will be using curriculum-based measures and really looking at those specific goal areas. Most of our students will be able to benefit somewhat from IXL. Most of our students will be able to benefit somewhat from IXL, and MAP can get really hard for some of our kids, so it just depends on the students.
Do we have a system-wide, do we have a data system that allows us to look at IEP goals across the system?
We, we don't do that, because IEP goals are so specific to the student.
Right. But at the end of the day, is the lead of the IEP ever saying, whatever they were, we made eight out of ten, like we made, so they are reporting that.
Exactly.
And so theoretically, we could sort of say, we made 80% of our IEP goals across the system this year, and we can look at that as a measure to consider. Or you think it's so...
Yeah, I don't know if it'd be really helpful data.
Yeah, yeah.
Because sometimes, if students don't make progress, it might not be because of anything that we were doing with instruction. There's so many different factors that affect progress, so I don't know if it'd be...
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I just want to, I want to give Stacy credit, because she's just been so intentional since she's been in this position about, one, like training staff and getting continuity across our programs with IEPs and implementation, and now she's moving on to the programs and selecting specific curricular pieces and training on program-specific pieces, and having IXL as an assessment piece is brand new. So, all this is just really tightening up our special education programs across the district.
And we're glad to get to hear her talk about things other than legal compliance issues, because it is a huge program. So, trustees, this does conclude our learning loss update to you, and so, we're going to move on after a five-minute break, apparently.
Five-minute break.
And we can, and it'll give us a chance to reset staff.
And all of this, correct.
And then, we'll queue up for Mr. Rouse and Dr. McConnell. President Counter, trustees, our last item on the study session this afternoon is Quarry Trail Elementary School update. And as I mentioned a couple of times this afternoon, we last, just last year, were naming the school, so we've progressed from naming it to getting ready to open it next year. The district has not opened a new school since 2005, and there was a while in this community where every, it seemed like every year we were opening a school, and this has been the longest gap in several decades. And so, so it's very exciting. And so, most of the district staff and the board has not been through this process, which, which is something that we want to make sure we take the time to update the board, our community. This overview is designed to share with the board the major milestones in the opening of the school, and we're very, very excited about that. We also will be, in this one, talking a little bit about the facility itself, is why we have Mr. Rouse here. And we're looking forward at some point to getting you all out for a VIP tour of the facility. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Bill and Craig to take the board through this next item.
Thank you, Superintendent Stock. It is a pleasure to be here talking about our new school, Quarry Trail Elementary School. And this is the first in a series of updates we'll give you throughout the year as we make progress towards opening, which I have the date in here, it's August, what, 10th? August 10th, '22, I believe, so exciting times. Today, we're going to give you a construction update, we're going to show you the boundaries and the projected enrollment. We'll talk a little bit about Spanish Dual Immersion Program, but we're going to bring that back actually in September as a, as a major item. We'll share a timeline with you, and then, next steps. Mr. Rouse.
Okay, so, here we have a, just a photo of the front of the school, and as you can see, the landscaping is still going in, tractor's still on site, but that was the last piece...
I know, but I couldn't get it to move, I couldn't find the key.
But that was like the last piece of concrete that was poured on site, and that was the actual, you know, get the marquee out front, the signage done. So, this is just a shot of the library and the administration building, and the way this, this site's laid out, you know, you have the bus drop, which is on the other side, which would be to the right, then you have a bus drop in front of the library and admin for the upper grades, and then, the kindergarten area has their own drop-off, too. So, and each area has their own driveway, and, you know, when we designed this school, we worked with Rockland PD and the developer, so that we won't, we won't have too much of a bottleneck there when, you know, the school's open, I mean, drop off and pick up.
Also, you'll see the color scheme on this. You can see the blue in the roof, along with the, the wall and other stucco pieces, so you get a flavor of the color scheme in here as well that the board shows.
So, we completed the majority of the construction in spring, and we were very fortunate, because COVID hit kind of as we were in the middle of construction, you know, in the peak of the building, right through the middle of it. And all of our materials were bought pretty much for the project. So, projects that were coming out right after, you know, spring and summer, you know, cost escalations on a project this size has been, just for wood alone, almost a million dollars. We did have some impact with staffing, we lost quite a, you know, got into electrical and the finishes. COVID started hitting our subcontractors, and we started losing a little bit of timing there, but we were able to pick it back up. And then, you know, we had to wait for PG&E. So, when we called for PG&E and our inspections to bring the power onto the site, so we could start, you know, hooking up all of our equipment, they had to move their manpower up to the hills to start getting ready for the fire season. So, we can, we left our generators out on site, and we were able to, you know, finish the interiors of the buildings, all the finished work, the cabinets and flooring. But now that PG&E came, and we got power hooked up on July 16th, I know that deal well, we're able to remove the generators and, and start with our startup and commissioning of our HVAC equipment, and go through and start walking the site with our engineers, and doing our punch list and sign-off with all the functions of the project. We left the sod off, turf sod, at the field and the kindergarten area, those are the two areas where we have grass on this campus, because there was thought about putting it down in the spring, but the generators would not be able to run the sprinkler system, it was too much of a strain. So, we decided to wait until we get to the fall, it's going to start to cool down here in a couple of months, and then, we'll go ahead and have the contractors come back, put the sod down, they maintain it for three months, and then, we'll pick it up as we hit into winter and maintain it. We also did not, since the school's opening in the fall of '22, we decided not to put the playground equipment down, installed yet. We're going to do that as we hit into, you know, late winter, spring of next year. And then, also, the furniture and audiovisual equipment, we're going to load it up as we hit into, you know, '22, spring, late winter, early spring. As you know, technology's continually changing every six months, and work with Ryan and his staff, we decided to wait on that and to see what's the latest and greatest at that time. And then, we're going to leave...
Have we had any vandalism at all since it's been up? Any graffiti, any anything?
We've had a little bit out there, we have. And the general contractor, they have cameras out there, and we're able to immediately remove the graffiti. We've had some graffiti.
So, actually, but you then take that and you, if we have, you give it to Rockland PD to follow up with if we have...
Exactly, yeah, we work with them on that. And, and we also were fortunate enough to get cameras on this site, so we have 18 cameras on the site, and Ryan and his, his group are working with us as far as getting that hooked up. The servers finally came in, because they were on backlog, like everything else technology-wise right now, and we're hooking that now. So, when the general contractor mobilizes off the site in about two to three weeks, we should have our cameras up, that's, that's the hope, to have our cameras up. And then, talking within our maintenance and operations group, you know, we have to be able to maintain and keep an eye on that site daily. So, we're going to rotate staff every day and make sure somebody walks that site, opens up every classroom in case there's a leak or a broken pipe.
Do we still have the fences up?
Yeah, I'm going to keep the fencing up until, probably until staff comes, Bill will talk about that a little bit later. But keep the construction fencing up, we're going to move it, the city won't let me keep it out on the street, we've got to move it up on the sidewalk. And I'm working with the city on that, too, to help, you know, protect our site. So, it's very important as far as keeping an eye, and also on the weekends, we're going to make sure that somebody goes out there and walks it and opens up all the classrooms. Any questions on update?
If you can walk the dog out of the tree, could you show me how to sneak your fence that I can walk with?
Have you figured it out yet?
No. I don't have time for fencing.
And just to thank you, it is a beautiful campus.
It's been nice.
My, my son would like me to say a thank you to you for all the construction equipment. He loves to watch it on the daily.
Oh, that's fun, huh?
And it has slowed down now, so we don't get to see it. We live right in that neighborhood, and our park is right there.
Oh, that's great.
So, it is a beautiful campus, and staff looks like they've been busy there, and you guys have done great work, so thank you.
You know, when we designed this project, working with Ed Services, and we programmed the design of this, we kind of worked, worked a little bit out of the box. When we do our site walk, you'll take a look at the kindergarten wing, and it's, it's kind of an offset, but with the special ed classroom in the middle of it, and it's, it's a really neat design. And then, the playground, the kindergarten playground area kind of has its own section in the back, it's kind of lowered down and fenced off, and it's a huge area for them. We're excited.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
And I will say, just the capacity, and we're going to go into enrollment in a minute, but with TK being universal, having additional capacity, great timing for our district to have this completed, to ease capacity issues at other sites as we roll into putting TK across the district.
So, just to look at the, the new boundaries for Quarry Trail, it, it will be carved out, the purple is the existing Valley View boundary line, and when we open Quarry Trail, the boundary will change to this green area there. So, so that will be the new Quarry Trail enrollment area. You know, we zoom in, looks something like this, you can see Sunset Ranch over off to the left, but it sounds like some of you live in this area, construction continues to boom back here, we got a lot of folks moving into this area, so...
Between Sunset Ranch and, the word Sunset Ranch and Quarry Trail, you know, there's that neighborhood, and it has a wonderful ravine or walk-through. There's a handful of folks that, kind of in between either, you, if you're on the kind of left side, I can see Sunset Ranch, I can walk Sunset Ranch or Quarry Trail. Is there any interest or desire to make the, I can be involved, I can go either, or is it become an inter-district if I want to?
Yeah, I was going to say, because of, you know, because this new school will give us a lot of capacity in schools, the inter-district process is always there, and, and I think we won't be impacted in terms of families being able to have some choice.
The red dots, what, can you tell the board what the red dots are?
Correct, that, those are the students for each, each house that, that are going to that Quarry Trail.
You can point your red dot.
Yeah, I was looking.
Look for your red dot, Tiffany, yeah, it's up there somewhere, one of those red dots.
So, how would families be aware of this? Is this public information? Is it, are we, are we sharing it with families? How does that work? Is it when they go to enroll with our USD, they're given this?
It's a great segue, we are going to get to that in this presentation.
Okay, sorry.
Perfect, good question, yep. So, projected enrollment, and Craig, you might want to talk about this a little bit, you work your magic with your consultants somehow to get these numbers, because it's future projections, so tell us about that.
I don't know if it's magic or not, but, and it's based on all the growth that's out there in the Whitney Ranch Phase II area. They, they really have accelerated the growth out there, the build-out was supposed to be, you know, 68 years, and it's looking like it, Whitney Ranch area will be built, built out in two to four, completely built out. So, our developer, developer fee permit pools in that area have really pretty much doubled than our projections last year, and we're already off to a good start this year. So, that's also based on the kids that are going to Valley View right now, that have in that Quarry Trail boundary, they'll be going back to Quarry Trail, and also some of the kids that are going to Sunset Ranch. And so, you'll see Valley View level out, Sunset Ranch will level out a little bit, but then, the 400 students when we open, that's, that's the projection that we're... that's the projection that we're looking at opening up in fall of '22. And then you can see it it peaks in '24, 20, or actually, '25, '26, '24, '25, and then levels out. So.
Okay, there's two questions. One is, if you're at Valley View and you don't want to switch, can you stay?
So we are we are going to talk about that, and we have a proposal for that. What we're thinking about is having a mandatory switch for K through fifth grade and giving sixth graders that option. Because we do want to make sure we have full staffing and enrollment at this school as well.
Yeah, Bill, if you want to go to slide 11, just to kind of, we can go to that segment and come back right now.
I have another question, so I'll come back to it.
Really, just really quickly on this piece is with the projected enrollment, you see the numbers in red below. So because of the state's new proposal for TK, expanding TK, it's very likely that I've added a class of TK every year to this, and I've also added a class for dual immersion because it's likely that we're going to want to have students coming into Quarry Trail, and we have a third kindergarten class. I think that's very likely in terms of our numbers. So that's what it would look like with us, two extra classes, about 50 students.
I do wonder how you fit in modeling into this, and I appreciate the TK, and I think you're right. And I appreciate that some of these numbers are are value coming over, which we can control. But it also seems to me that while we're building out quicker than expected, home prices are going up much quicker than expected and pricing out young families. And so I do wonder if our if our traditional projections won't come true, given who can afford these homes. And I wonder, do we think about that? Do you factor that in? Because the worst part would be, we expect it, it doesn't come true, and then we're under enrolled.
And and we do. And we're still seeing a lot of the younger kids coming in to the smaller houses that are pretty much around the Quarry Trail, but-
But the new construction is not, right? I mean, it's, are they are they small? Are they four?
Well, the Whitney Phase, Whitney Phase, Whitney Ranch Phase Two, they started out with the smaller homes, 1,500, 1,800 square foot houses. And then around the school, they're getting a little bit bigger. You're seeing some two larger two stories. And and, you know, JMC homes, as you go towards the back, they're getting bigger homes. There are 3,000, 4,000 square foot single story homes. We what we typically see in those homes are you're getting the secondary kids come in. Those are more of a second or third home for someone.
I will say, I've been surprised, and it's just one neighborhood, right? But I know our neighborhood, a lot of the new neighbors moving in, we assumed they would be older families just because of the price point. They're not. It's a lot of young children, like two, three streets, a lot of young children. And so we were actually, we, I'm sitting in my house, like, as I'm meeting my neighbors, like, this is a great sign, because I would have assumed, right, 1.1, 1.3 million dollar homes, it would be older families. And at least what we're seeing, it's it's not. It is a lot of older parents with younger children, but they're still younger children, so.
And Tiffany, I want to confirm what you're saying, because our kindergarten enrollment this year is higher than ever before. So we're we're about 730 kindergartners. Valley, you see it at Valley View.
But this year's a funky year because of COVID.
It's a funky year, but Valley View by itself without, we had to move one kindergarten to Sunset Ranch for capacity, and we're moving a second kindergarten. So we're moving two full classes out of Valley View because of capacity. So they have, they would have five kindergarten classes there, and these would be the Quarry Trail kids.
Which is good, for getting more students.
And you're right, Tiffany. There's a lot of folks moving in from the Bay Area, cashing out and and moving up in that area and working with the home builders in that area. We ask that same question. And that's why you are seeing some of the younger kids come into the families from the Bay Area, able to cash out there and come up here and buy the larger homes.
And as you also mentioned, we're seeing, and I and I see this as, just as well, is you're seeing people wait longer to have children. So they're more in their 30s or so, that first child. They're more established in careers. Their earning is a little bit different than when I had my first kid in my early 20s. And so that that's another trend that we're seeing. And then, and when you go to these back to school nights, like when I go to sixth grade, I see people in their my age decade, or even just the one below, which I never would have seen with my older children. And so that's another trend. And it helps us even think about how we reach out and communicate with families because we assume that these kind of others are younger, but they're actually not. So it's it's a whole demographic piece we're seeing in society that we need to attend to as well.
So Spanish dual immersion program, just again, a brief overview, we're going to go great depth next month, but would start in kindergarten. And and ideally, students would continue through sixth grade. We know from research that's the maximum benefit in terms of these kinds of programs. Be a 50-50 model for two-way bilingual immersion, so it would promote bilingualism and belligerency in English and Spanish, and positive cross-cultural attitudes. It would be 50% in Spanish instruction and 50% in English instruction. And I'll show you a breakdown on the next slide of a possible model for that. We would start with just a kindergarten class next year, and then each year, we would expand that by one grade till we had the full K6 program. So you can see kind of how that would break out each year. One of the reasons we do that, you know, these programs are easy to talk about, but harder to implement, and actually even harder to hire for, hire qualified people who are belligerent. And so we're going to take our time and roll it out and make sure we do it right.
So two questions. Is the is the ideal, then, every single teacher in that program have a B-quad? Are we going to require that, or?
The we're, the way we're conceiving it right now is that we would have a, it's nice in the 50-50 model because you can have one belligerent B-quad teacher and then one English teacher, and they can actually switch students. And that's staffing wise, the easiest thing to do. So we would probably have one of each at each grade level, and then have them move.
Makes perfect sense. So and the first one, so I'm not familiar with that research. So tell me more about that. What you said, it caps out? Tell me more about that.
So it's interesting in dual immersion programs, and parents would need to be front-loaded with this information. So when you enroll your child in these programs, their progress based on CASP and other pieces is actually slower. So their trajectory of learning and mastery is going to be at a slower rate than a typical child. But then if you stay in a program, when you get to fourth grade, what you see is their curve accelerates, and they pass others, the average student.
I see. So you're talking about overall, you're talking about CST, you're talking about S-Back, grade level proficiency. You're not talking about Spanish knowledge. You're talking about bilingualism. Okay. So because I thought you were talking about bilingualism. That makes sense to me. And I am curious, though, let's say this is wildly successful. Then we have these kids who are pretty steeped in Spanish, dropped into Granite Oaks or with with what to serve them. So how do we think about that to maintain this high level? I know it's a problem.
I think it's a great question for the board.
And we've got six years to figure out. Yeah. Yeah, right, right. Exactly.
Yeah, no, you're right.
That's super cool.
You have to think about that when you put these in place, because someday, these kids will go to middle school, and we need to have a program.
Right. Awesome.
So due to that, are we, are we strongly encouraging that if they enroll in this program in kindergarten, they must remain in it until sixth grade?
We're strongly encouraging. We can't make them stay, but we would like that because we would like to, like, kind of like the GATE program, we want the the class to stay intact. It'll be hard to enter in third grade if you're not, you know, if you're not a Spanish speaker at all, it'd be much more difficult. I mean, it's doable, and we'll have those entry points, but we'd love to keep it consistent.
And we, and part of the work we did, it's a couple of years ago, we prepared to bring this, where we did extensive, we had a committee, we involved parents, boards, teachers, others. And we did visitations to Davis, Sacramento, the Bay Area, and went and did, went and visited, talked to staff, talked to people there to to understand really how the programs build, what helps. And we'll we'll continue to do that and collaborate, and and because we know that's going to be a central piece of this. And that's why we're making this a whole separate board update in September, was we know there's just going to be a ton of questions around how all this works.
Yeah, absolutely. Just what a model might look like. So in these programs, you have language arts in Spanish and in English at all grades, because it's critical that you learn both pieces. But like, for example, math and science in early elementary would be taught only in Spanish, and social studies would be taught in English. And then about third grade, you would flip-flop that and teach social studies and science in Spanish and math in English. And the purpose there is that the math, as the math becomes more complex, students have an opportunity to learn that in a primary language as well, and their Spanish is developed. So a timeline in terms of opening, and this gets back to the question earlier from trustee Sadoff, is that we are going to notify current RUSD families of the boundary. If they are in the QT boundary, we are going to let them know this month that in the following school year, your your child will be moving to the new school, Quarry Trails. I feel like many of them will be excited. Feedback from when Sunset Ranch opened was that families overwhelmingly wanted to attend the school, even regardless, even if they're in sixth grade, they wanted to come over. So great, we're proposing grades K through 5 be mandatory to come over, and that grade six would be optional, especially if students have spent most of their career at the elementary school. Currently, we have 246 Quarry Trail students at Valley View, 40 at Sunset, and then 29 at a variety of other schools. We also are going to email all elementary families. So one of the board desires was to start choice programs in our district. So we want to make sure other families know about dual immersion, have an option to consider it for their kindergarten. So we're going to open that up. We'll see what we get in terms of interests. If we find we have a really high level of interest, then we're going to have to look at expanding the program in terms of accommodating that and finding the balance between people who are living in the neighborhood and want it, and then people throughout the district as well.
I love that question on that. And I may have completely misread or misunderstood. When we're doing, offering the dual immersion choice, isn't it only the new incoming students like kindergarten, and then the next those moving up? So our current elementary families that would be surveyed would not necessarily be partaking in the program. Is that correct?
We would survey incoming kindergarten families.
Oh, so you're looking at those that would be coming into kindergarten, coming into first grade, that.
Do you have an incoming kindergartner? If you do, we have this program opening next year. Would you, would you want?
I misunderstood. I saw all elementary families, and I was thinking, oh, that could be difficult for a fifth grade family, right? Do you want it? Yes.
Well, what we would do is, I mean, a couple of things. One, if you go into, where do I go to school boundary? Like, if you put in a Quarry Trail boundary, you're going to show Valley View. So there, so anybody in the community that wants to know, if I buy this home, what school boundary am I in? You can, you'll figure out Quarry Trail just on the natural. What we wanted to do was begin to establish that community of Quarry Trail. And if for the 700-plus kindergarteners coming in, we, when we message to them, we will let them know we have very limited space in a new program, but we're checking interest. And if we are oversubscribed in interest, then we'll use some type of lottery fashion that allows folks to go in. But once you're in, then you would, you know, for then you would then-
So to that, to that point, two questions. One is, is the intention in that scenario, if we have to go to a lottery, to prioritize kids that live in the Quarry Trail boundary or not?
Well, what we, so this works-
We have, or we've not decided?
No, 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 no. The recommendation works in two ways. One is, we anticipate, if I see three kindergartens going, one will be in English only.
No, I understand. I'm talking about just the dual immersion. Okay.
So then one, then we would take the other one for, you know, the dual immersion piece. So Quarry Trail kids go to Quarry Trail. This third class is only for out-of-boundary kids, because we recognize we want to build an option for students in the district to access dual immersion.
Sorry, now, now I'm confused. Sorry. So if I live in Quarry Trail and I want to do dual immersion, it's not available to me?
It it is. We have a whole strand just for Quarry Trail.
I'm sorry. So you're going to have two, one for Quarry Trail. So so but still, I'm all good, but you are, you are highly more likely to get this if it's coveted, if you live in the Quarry Trail boundary than if you don't. And maybe that's okay, or maybe that's not, but we should think about that. If we're trying to offer something to the entire district, and it's only offered to this one school, I don't know, it's worth it. And I'm actually not advocating, I'm just, I want to, you know, again, we have lots of time to think it through, but I just-
Right. And and part of surveying, and we want to, part of surveying, even the Quarry Trail kindergarten incoming classes, what if 90% want dual immersion? Then we may reevaluate and say-
Or zero. This could be a moot question, right?
Or zero. And so one will understand that, but we wanted to create a separate strand for students throughout the district in addition to residing. And and so that way, we 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 don't have-
Are you, are you, if you live in the, if you live in the Sierra, thank you, are you, do you have a better chance of getting the IB program than if you don't live in the Sierra boundary currently?
You do, because if, for example, you would say, that's your homeschool, you're there, and then we accept intern intra-district transfers.
So we have a precedent in a sense of doing that.
We do. And then and then if it is popular, there's nothing saying we can't start another program. The other piece we have to consider is, this is a total cost. So when we add an additional class, we're going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars at build-out on staffing. Because when we take, say, 20 kids, 24 kids for kindergarten, they aren't all coming from one school that we extract a teacher from. They come from throughout the district. So this is a, this is going to be, I'm saying, a lost lead if you go across program.
Although that argues for me why everyone in Rockland should have equal opportunity to get into it, not not based on where you live. But again, we-
Right. And we can talk about the whole concept of choice schools and look at that. And and there are options. If, I mean, and this is where I I've done some work in previous districts on, if we wanted to redraw, let's say, elementary boundaries and say, a dual immersion or IB should be a choice school. There's no boundaries. We have boundaries everywhere else. There are ways to look at that, but that would be a very significant piece. And as, with the board has set a goal of increasing choice for families in over the next five years of adding those. And when we look at that, that may be a conversation that point to think about. How do we have an open access, but also take care of creating those neighborhood schools? So this is really our first kind of moving into that piece. And 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 we're we're excited to see what happens. But we did want to start with creating enough access to the program for out-of-boundary kids intentionally.
Great. So the other question I had real quick, so 246 going from Valley View, I assume there's the kids who live in what is going to rebound read into the 40 from Sunset Ranch, same thing. The 29 others, these are kids that live in the new boundary but have chosen to go somewhere else correctly. So it seems to me that you wouldn't want to mandate those kids have to come back if they've chosen to leave for a specific school. Is, do we treat them at all differently? I don't know why it feels different to me.
Craig, where, where do you-
Does that make sense?
Is that true about the 29? They've chosen to go somewhere else?
Maybe they bought a house.
For whatever reason, they've, 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 they've put in paperwork for inter-district transfer already saying, I choose. Now, if they choose to come back, that's fine, but it feels like, like this notion of grades two through five, K through five, we're going to tell you have to. It feels for those 26, 29, maybe we think differently about those.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that makes sense.
And and the other intent is, we still will have the intra-district transfer process available. So in terms of assigning you to your residential school, this is what we're recommending. If a family wants to, say, for childcare reasons, go to Twin Oaks, or because grandma lives nearby and they want to go there, they can do the inter-district, that'll all functions, to come in or come out of the school.
Sure. But it's no guarantee. They could, right?
It's not. But this is looking at assigning to the-
And I guess, just real quick, from a transportation standpoint, there's, if I choose to go here or whatever, or because of dual immersion, not creating special bus routes? Or it's all on me as a parent to get myself there? Cool.
Good questions. Thank you. So September through December, I I've been talking about the presentation on 9/22. We're going to be finalizing classroom furniture, technology. We are going to be posting and hiring the principal and the dual immersion coordinator potentially, and a principal's secretary. We want these folks to, at least the principal and the secretary, to start working on January 4th when we come back. So we want a full, like, eight months of setup for this school. And that's all the cultural pieces and curriculum pieces, mascot, you know, hiring of staff. There's a lot of things that need to happen, so that person would come on at that point.
We envision that office lighting up January 4th. So we will have a school office open. January 4th is our vision to allow that to go through. And that's where, as Craig mentioned, a lot of the infrastructure, technology coming in, they'll be involved in helping with that. And so, because one of the other reasons we delayed it was we get longer warranty life. And so we we want that principal and the folks to help be involved in that setting up. And that helps create that identity, because we imagine PTC meetings starting in January, February, you know, we're creating a school community. And and so we need people to do that.
So in the other, well, I don't think I put this in there. No, but there's, I mean, so we'll be meeting, we have a monthly meeting with our cabinet members, Ed Services, facilities, business office, to to stay on target. We have a timeline we're working through with all these pieces. We're working with CAVE, the California Association for Bilingual Education. They have a great kind of step-by-step process we're following to make sure that we're doing everything we do to to implement a dual immersion program with fidelity. There is a big human resources piece that will come into this. You you probably saw those numbers at Valley View, and that's also a staffing piece. So we're going to be moving a large number of teachers around when we get to opening and hiring for Quarry Trails.
250, you pull up Valley View, what does that take out?
I think the projection was like nearly 400, maybe less, 375? For a little bit? Yep, hopefully. But it is, I think it's like 12 to 14 staff. So it's significant in terms of how we manage that. We want to make sure we work with labor partners, and we're very transparent about that process and what it looks like. So that will be something we start actually in the fall.
No, Bill?
Are they still together?
Longer, but-
Okay. So we're anticipating that. We're, as Roger mentioned, we had a District DI Committee of teachers, parents, and administrators that did a lot of this research that I just kind of jumped on board with, like, about the 50-50 program, which program would work in Rockland best. We're going to revive that committee and have them share in kind of this implementation timeline and and give input as we move forward towards opening. Okay. And then that's everything for today. Questions?
I think I said, talking 400 for, at, Sunset Ranch, who's 40, what do they go to fall call?
So there, this year, I think we're going, we're going to project them, we're like 650 this year. They're over 650, so they'd still be over 600. They've picked up a lot of kids this year as well. But there, I think, we're talking about two to three teachers there in terms of impact, which is, which is like going to- two to three teachers there in terms of impact, which, which is like an attrition number yearly, kind of. From Sunset?
Sunset, sorry.
I'm gonna defer to Roger and Craig on that one.
I mean, the, we have not changed the boundaries in, in, in a significant amount of time. Part of this is also when boundaries were set, the plans on the exact types of homes developers were building, like the fifteen hundred square feet, the twenty-five hundred, those evolved, and so, and, and also even the phasing in of when they're gonna bring those homes in. So we, in essence, could've been like changing boundaries regularly, and one of the most difficult conversations in, 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 in communities, yeah, is boundary changes. And so when folks lock into a, a neighborhood and a school, they, they tend to wanna be there. Since we can accommodate the six hundred at Sunset Ranch with the facility, the facilities built for that, it didn't make sense for us to start changing that just to try to even numbers across the district. And, and typically for us in looking at like, does a school operations pay for itself? Around four hundred is where we consider it's, it's, it's hitting that where it's, it's, it's paying for itself versus we're putting more into the operations piece than we are covering, so it's gonna, it's draining from the budget. So we do look at that, but it just, since we have the facility and it's established, it didn't make sense just to try to even numbers to make that candidly. It is something we do look at annually to see where we're at. We, that's part of what prompted us to look at, uh, changing our long-term housing agreement with Rockland Academy, was we knew we had growth in, in, in the Rockland Elementary area. And so we do look at that, or we're to place a program. Uh, when we look at TK sightings, when we increase that, we'll be looking in at that as well. So there's a lot of pieces we annually look at in, 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 in regards to this before we go to recommend a boundary change. And typically in a boundary change, we look for, this is gonna endure long-term in, in order to do that. But it is something that we do anticipate, um, that we will have to consider in looking at boundaries in some of our, uh, older schools, just as those neighborhoods gentrify, and we wanna make sure we have the best capacity.
So, so I, you just, right now, it's, I just, you know, Whitney tends to connect with Springview and Rockland connects with Granite Oaks. With quarry trail, does that make the elementary six and six? So that was five and six before, I'm just, I'm just, you know, number of elementary schools to Granite, okay, so, so with quarry trail, you'll have six elementary schools that kind of, I guess, feed into Whitney, even though there's the Granite Oaks, whatever. All right, and then the other six feed into Rockland, but then there's the Springview Granite Oaks piece, right?
Correct, we're about seventy, thirty, uh, Granite Oaks, seventy percent go to, to Rockland High, thirty, so.
And then Springview is the opposite.
Yep, correct, but this will balance that out, six, six feeters per, uh, per middle school.
I'm assuming so, but just to confirm, the boundary lines, does it take into consideration, I know our numbers do, but does it take into consideration the growth that we expect? There's several developments coming in Whitney Ranch, um, with Sunset Ranch being one of our highest populated, correct? Isn't that one of our highest populated? So are we, hopefully those boundary lines, I'm trying to zoom in and see, are drawn to where the new developments would send those students to quarry trail, so we're not impacting Sunset Ranch more?
Correct, yes, yeah, they, they took, back in two thousand and five and six, when you looked at the master plan development from the city, when the district worked with the city and drew these boundaries, that was part of their anticipation of the build out of Rockland. This is the last growth area in Rockland. Now, there's still infill lots throughout the city, but this is the last main growth area.
Neighborhood by, that we're, we're, we increased at Rockland Al, right? That, one over by the DMV, that, there are a lot of kids in there.
Correct.
But those, the mentioning, sorry, that build out the next four years in Whitney Ranch, that would've been on that plan that you guys looked at in two thousand and five or two thousand, okay.
Yes, the, the master plan from the city, right.
Perfect.
And then, and then just on that map, the light blue area on there, that's.
It's green.
Green?
Yep, that's the little finger that goes up that.
Oh, I got you, got you, and then that dark blue is.
Valley.
Valley, okay.
Yeah, the big picture is, is back.
Sorry, yeah, 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 okay, should've just done it that way.
That's Lincoln.
And, 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 and if the, if the board, you know, we, we can provide more detail, and actually in the conference room next door, there's a big map that you can see the actual city streets, and, and so, um.
So Roger, we'll update that one with the quarry trail information? The, the map in there?
It is updated.
With quarry trail in there?
Quarry, it says possible new school, but we do that every, about every two to three years, so we're about ready to, to do another update for that, uh, boundaries, yes.
Just, again, with the colors, and then we update the, I think, the, the part on the website, I mean, it just, it makes it very easy as.
And it also updates all the streets, so you'll see the streets coming in with, with, working with the county, where we're at as of when we, you know, update the, the master map or boundary map.
So we've gone from area twelve to quarry trail, and, and so we're, uh, so we're, we're, again, this is why we know this is, we'll be bringing regular updates to the board. We also wanted to come to you to this afternoon was, we, we start sending on information to families this August that you weren't, oh, we didn't know we were sending quarry trail stuff out, to let you know, because we know families will wanna know, and, and so we're gonna let this school year get going, and then, a little bit, and then we wanna, you know, share that information. And so we'll, we'll be excited to update you on this journey to get quarry trail open. Um, and, and, you know, we, we, we are, and I have to give, again, Craig, and a tremendous amount of credit to have a huge project in this environment come in on time, at cost, um, is, is just huge. We haven't brought you a change order, normally, you know, as a board, you would be wondering if we're bringing you change orders for cost overruns, and we have not done that, if you've noticed, down on your items. I think our community can be very proud of how the board has used taxpayer dollars to, uh, to, you know, fund this school, build this school, and do so in a very efficient, effective manner.
And we got plenty of space on, on the new building for the, uh, Blue Ribbon Award spot where we can paint that on, right?
Yes, we do.
And this also creates an additional field and other space for our community. These are taxpayer-funded facilities, so we've actually increased the footprint in the community for their use of space as well. So we think that's also something, the way we contribute to the community.